Or graduating kids to another level when they're not ready to go. Because at some point it's going to catch up and we have to figure out what that plan is. One of the things that I think that this board needs to do with the incoming is, is the fact that of your goals, Dr. Jones, there's not one of them that's set for achievement. And I think we need to revisit this in the in with the incoming board. To have a goal that what is the, what is the achievement goal? And what are we going and how are you going to attain it? And I think we need to address that.
Mr. Share.
Under the category of I wouldn't want to be a. I, I, I think all the questions you guys are asking and what the superintendent presented is. Good. But it's, in my experience, pretty typical. Which is, we're talking about individual, lower level things. And the big strategic takeaways. May not get the focus that they need. If you look at the data and there is this disclaimer of you have to be careful looking at the data. As I told you in the last meeting when we did the strategic plan, we talked to the state. They were super great. The statistics people up there are fantastic. And they tell you where the trap doors are. One of the comparison trap doors are, is comparing a district that is all in building or schools that are all in building. With those that were hybrid couple of days a week, right? So they tell you those. So comparing across districts, you have to compare if you're going to do any comparison to districts according to them. Is it's got to be like for like. And that's kind of obvious. There are some people who are like for like for us. So you can do those comparisons. You shouldn't do comparisons that are not like for like. Here's a couple of takeaways. And I, this is why I say I wouldn't want to be because I, again, as Dr. Gaetan Francis, I sound like the eighty year old man. It's one of my great disappointments leaving this board. That. We invested and I served with some giants. Laura Erickson, Peter Von Braun. Leslie Moriarty. Even people I didn't agree with like Barbara O'Neil. But we focused on trying to close the achievement gap. We doubled the resources in these schools, Title I schools versus the other schools per student. We did all kinds of things. We promised a whole bunch of things to the state. I'm now looking at the conclusion of it and I hate to say it, it was a failure. Because what you take away, the good news is, let's just take ELA. There's two big takeaways that I would encourage you guys to focus on. One is. There are one, two, three, four, five schools. Where COVID learning loss compared to two years ago. It's almost non-existent. It's less than four percent COVID learning loss. Okay, that's good news. At Glenville Riverside ISD, Cos Cob Central. Central used to be a problem school. It's not anymore. The school we're in. Tom and his team have done a great job here, a fantastic job on what, what's gone. You can see it right in the data. So whatever these five schools did. And notice four of them are elementary schools where all our kids were in. And one of them was this cohorting thing we had in the middle schools. So there's something to be learned there if somebody goes looks at that because the COVID learning loss there was exceptionally low. And in ELA, it was generally low. It was, you know, five, six percent. That's good news. Western Middle School, it was eleven percent. Okay, so something went on at Western that didn't happen at Hamilton Avenue, didn't happen at JC. Didn't happen at New Lebanon. Those four schools are always in the compare set. Somebody's got to go figure out what happened. Here's the biggest thing you guys, I think, got to call it what it is. And if I were still on the board, I would be pulling the fire alarm. There are three schools where half the students. Half the students in English. Are not at proficiency. Think about that. Fifty percent of the kids in that school. Okay, and some of them are even lower. By the way, you can look it up and figure out which ones they are. Mathematics. We got six schools that had double digit above ten percent learning loss decline. Six schools, ten percent slide more. There's one in here that's four, fifteen point six percent slide. Something's going on. Now, thank God Mike reads on the case. That guy's a brilliant teacher and he'll, I, I think, figure it out. But in mathematics, and here's the biggest thing. Four schools. At least half the students. Are not at proficiency in four schools. You've got schools in here, two schools. Two thirds of the students. Are not at proficiency in mathematics. Okay, so all of this is great. They're doing a great job at the high school. Teachers are working hard. There is no doubt about it. They're working hard every day doing COVID learning loss, all the rest of it. But if the board. Doesn't take it upon themselves to tell the superintendent. That you want focus, laser focus on these schools, these problems. The rest of the schools are doing, are going to do okay. A Riverside is going to do okay. A North Myannis is going to do okay. Those schools are, ISD is doing great. Okay, some of these other schools. You guys have to get everybody focused on this because here's the shameful part. I don't care about the buildings. Candidly, I care about the administrators, but this is what they're paid to do. It's their job. I am heartbroken. That we have schools where two thirds of the student are past grade to grade. And they never get close to proficiency in mathematics. We have a couple of schools, half the kids in the schools are passed from grade to grade. And they don't get close to it. So you got to help those kids. You got to zero in on those kids. I, I would be pulling the fire alarm and all you got to get to hands on deck. Stop having Board of Ed meetings talking about stadiums. Start have Board of Ed meetings talking about math, English. Every single meeting, it should take all your time. It should be the focus. It should be all hands on deck. All these teachers and administrators need the full support of the board. And they need to know that that's all you're focused on. For the success of these kids, that they're working their tails off day in and day out to try to educate. But there's some big findings here. The rest of it is all noise. The rest of it will be fine. The high school will be fine. Some of these middle schools will be fine. Some of these elementary schools will be fine. There's nothing more urgent. And I say it this way, and it makes me crazy. We saw this in, in enrollment tonight. I'll finish in a minute, Peter. Finish tonight. We have the lowest class sizes in a decade, in decades. We're spending more money than we've ever spent. And we've got this. Nothing more important to focus on than that. Please do it for these kids who are. Who are getting left behind by this.
Okay, so I'm sorry, we're, we're not having a discussion right now. We're, it's a board, it's a board meeting. Thank you. I, I'm going to share a bit of a different perspective. Frankly, if you go and, thank you, Peter, it's, it's my opportunity to speak. You've, you've had yours now. At this point. I, I've seen data, plenty of data. What I, what I haven't heard though, and I, I know I heard it from the administrators. And I know I heard it when I saw it on the state website because I looked at the data too. COVID, it, it was the spring of twenty, kids were not in school. There was some learning going on, but not enough. Last year we were back, but it was a strange year. Now we're really back in person. And that is going to have an effect and it's going to have an effect for a while. I've heard every one of the people that presented tonight talk about the fact that they're working on strategies to combat this. We have the tools, we have the resources, we have the data, we have the people with the drive. We've also had turnover. We've had turnover, but in a good way, where the right people are now on the case, on the job. We've had two curriculum presentations in a row. Where we have focused on what needs to be changed, updated resources for teachers. Transformative learning, making sure we're teaching consistently. These are all things that are going to go and drive this. It's not just about achievement gap. Every student needs to grow. And we, we've talked about growth over time. And that, that is the measure that we're starting to see. When I got on the board, we were comparing this year's fourth grade to last year's fourth grade. It was useless. We are in a much better place. We are directionally going where we need to be going. There's more work to do. Nobody's saying that there's not, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact of the progress that we've made. COVID is a blip. It's a bad blip for the students. But with the data, with the work, there's an opportunity with, with honestly with the funding that we've gotten, an opportunity to do things that we haven't been able to do. Mentioned this before, we've not added headcount to our budget in years. We also haven't added programming. We've not added anything. We've actually been taking away, taking away, taking away. We are in a different place. I think this is an inflection point. I think it's an opportunity. As for your comment about the stadium, Peter, we've been getting committee updates. We haven't been digging deep. If you look at what the agendas have been this year. We're focused on achievement. That's where we've been going. It's where we're spending our time tonight. It's a lengthy meeting for a reason. There's a lot to cover. So we're going to move on now to our AOP report. Jones. Mark, we'll, we'll let Tony kick off.
Okay.
Sure, and I, I think they could probably present very quickly. I do just want to say a couple of things. First of all. I've had a lot of questions and I know the board did because several of you contacted me over the last week. Am I crunching? There have been a lot of questions. So hopefully the ALP newsletter that the team put out helped answer a lot of those. We've answered a lot of your questions personally, individually. But I want to say our team, again, they're a brand new team, but they fully understand how important ALP is and just advanced learning in this community. And there has been absolutely no discussion that we would ever get rid of advanced placement, that we would get rid of the ALP program. And I, as a matter of fact, for the first time I heard something that might have been in the debate the other night where somebody said that Stanford's getting rid of all of their advanced classes. And when we're talking about enrollment, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, we're going to get all these kids from Stanford. So I reached out to the superintendent. She said absolutely not. And as a matter of fact, they're expanding early college, they're expanding AP, they're expanding IB. They used to have a gifted program different than ours in fourth and fifth grade that went way back in two thousand and five. But they're actually trying to enhance advanced programming. So the only place that I'm aware of right now is New York. And the way we look at it is they will probably move here. Oh, we did. I hadn't heard that. But, but again, we, we're very committed and we know how important it is to this community. So I just wanted to open it up with that. I don't know if we want to ask them how long the presentation was, or if you think you're fine just to go to questions.
Are we ready to go?
Yeah, Mark, I think, sorry. Hang on, sorry, stupidly unmuted on my computer. All right, Mark, I think given that the hour. If you can just highlight things that maybe we're not in the report or questions you got, and then we can go directly into questions from the board. Because I, I think we've, we've all seen the materials and I know your team's done a lot of work on them. And I know you have a presentation, but we're really trying to get to the focus on this one.
Sure, let, let, let me give you an overview. It'll take about three minutes and then we can go right to questions, Peter. Is that okay? That'd be great. Right. So I'd like to briefly describe how the management of the advanced learning program has evolved this year. With the addition of three new academic content coordinators, we now have an organizational structure that can more effectively and efficiently manage the day-to-day demands and long-term goals of the advanced program. Coupled with our essential core academic programming. I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly take this occasion to recognize the enduring and steadfast commitment of Ms. Bonnie O'Regan as the advanced learning program facilitator. For those who may not be aware, Ms. O'Regan has single-handedly stewarded this program for years. All while living under the compulsions of a teacher contract and a nominal facilitator stipend. What she has been able to maintain is nothing short of remarkable. Thank you, Bonnie. I am so delighted that Dr. Marcus, Mr. Reed and Mrs. Fogel will now work collaboratively with Ms. O'Regan in years ahead. As a team, we want you to know that we embrace the challenges and opportunities that lay before us with fresh perspectives and resolve for excellence. The coordinator team submitted a thorough written report to the board in advance of tonight's meeting. We will highlight critical pieces from the report for board discussion and comment. I'd like to take in a minute and address some of the uncertainties that are floating around in the community. In two thousand twenty twenty-one, we made some intentional and necessary decisions that impact the ALP programming in order to maintain the required cohorting requirements. Our goal as we entered the two thousand twenty twenty-one school year was to keep our students in school with as little disruption to the learning process as possible. Although other programs were more significantly impacted, the advanced learning program certainly took on a different look. That said, it became clear that there was a silver lining that was emerging from the change in programming at the elementary level. And I came to the board with recommendation to increase outbilloting for all schools moving in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Citing the advantages of longer blocks of uninterrupted instruction. That said. And in full transparency, the true value of these blocks has yet to be realized as we continue to work within the confinement of COVID safeguards this year. I'm highly confident that in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, we will be able to actualize the value in this new block approach. We will lift social studies out of the humanities block to allow teachers to truly offer an enriching and complete literary experience. Our STEM block will remain the same with a slight modification. That science will always be a dedicated thirty-minute period universally scheduled at the end of the block. So that students who only qualified for reading can still be eligible for science. I know this was a source of concern in the past and we're pleased to remedy it. Similarly, at the middle school level in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, we will return to a standalone advanced science course in grade six through eight. And you will hear more about improvements to this progressive pathway during the presentation and in our STEM report to the board in December. I want to take a moment and talk about the past failures in communication. They're unacceptable. And I assure you, they will be remedied. As the director of these programs, it is my responsibility and I accept the fair criticisms noted this evening. We need to do better and we will. In closing, I trust in the collaborative relationship we have with this board and the community as we optimistically look to the future where we can leave these temporary programmatic shifts in the rear view and focus on the exciting opportunities ahead. We welcome your questions at this time.
Thank you, Mark. All right, Ms. Stowe.
So I know we all have a lot of questions. Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Bonnie. Thanks to the new team. I'm just going to take, I imagine I'll do different rounds. So I'm only going to start with one question here now. I've, all of my children have benefited from this program and I've seen how it's changed over the years and and that's, and that goes to the turnover, but I think the one thing is that this board and I believe prior boards has always been special when Barbara O'Neil was on it. It's been very committed to this ALP program. So it was refreshing to hear you say that tonight. And I just want to make sure that we sort of take a step back and think about. You know, what's the purpose of this program for a lot of, and I know someone said that earlier tonight, but this was never considered a gifted program, right? That's one to two percent of the population. This is an advan- advanced learning program. And so when you, making sure that everyone's being served by this program is really important. And one of the things that when I look at science, I think, you know, the middle school science kind of shook us all up admittedly. And when that was presented, the good news is that there's transparency now and that there's consistency across the middle schools. Because I can tell you that that night, all the open houses were in middle school. My phone was like buzzing like crazy, right? Because I had French and Western texting me and I was hearing the same thing in the central and eastern. So the good news is that they were consistent. The bad news is that people didn't like what they heard. And I, I, what I'm now hearing, which I, is that there just wasn't a different, a different curriculum and that's unfortunate. But I think you're hearing aloud and clear that we'd like to see multiple, multiple levels again. In the science program. But one of the other things I've been hearing in the community is have we thought about, as, as we're taking a step back and thinking about how we deliver this particular science curriculum? Is there anything else we should be rethinking? And some people have talked about, I think it was back at Western, that they used to have a seminar class, right? Where you're still doing leveling, but you're also then going, almost like the Andrew Vermont program. But coming down to the middle school. And I've been hearing from different people in the community that that's an interesting idea. And so as we rethink science and what this board wants. I just wanted to know if maybe, I don't know if Bonnie could talk to that or, or Tracy? Um, if they've thought about that, because I think that could be an interesting idea.
I, I don't think they're that far down the trail yet where they probably would not want to talk too much about it because we have a lot of work to do. I, you know, I think again, this team, because they've been with us for literally a matter of, you know, eight, twelve weeks, really, when you think of it that way. I know they didn't know until we started getting questions that everyone thought there were two different, you know, curriculums. So I think that was a learning, you know, for us when we started getting all of your questions. So I know there's a lot of work and they were prepared to talk to that tonight. So we might want, I don't know if Tara or Mark want to speak to that.
Tara, Mark, do you want to win?
Yeah, I think Tara would like to.
I can speak that. We are aware that the board has concerns about how we are providing for our students, specifically those who show advancement at the middle school level. And as a new coordinator, it's a primary goal and a charge of mine moving forward. I see this as a goal and what I know that I need to do is continue to collect more information about how our students are grappling with the current curriculum. Both those who are designated as advanced and those students who are designated as on level. And I need to continue to survey my teachers, my parents and my students to find out what we need to do to ensure that they can have an advanced experience moving forward. I look forward to talking more about that in December when I've had a bit more time. Right now, these pathway projects, which were teacher-created under the guidance of instructional coaches and a consultant and myself over the summer. We know that these projects, while they are run in parallel to the curriculum. They are still giving our students additional strategies at the high school level content assessment standards. We don't know if we'll continue to use those projects as a piece of our curriculum in advance for next year. We know that it will be a standalone course and we know that our teachers will continue to meet the needs of their students as best possible. In December, I'll talk through a few different options moving forward.
Sorry, I was going to say, just that's helpful. I look forward to that. The only other thing I'd say is right now. I could report is that the advanced pathway for the sixth grader is simply just work for them separately alone at night, which is just not, not what was the goal at all.
Doc Francis.
So, sorry, but this question was sort of asked, which is sort of what's the, what is the purpose of ALP and, and a discussion of that. I think the first thing is that the, you know, the mission of our district, there's a bunch of stuff, but part of it is to reach the potential of the student, right? So I think in the advanced learning program, as it's stated in the policy, you know, these are for students who are able to perform at significantly above grade level. And the purpose of the ALP program, as it says clearly in the policy, is to serve these students through an accelerated and enriched curriculum. And it defines those things. So, you know, accelerated is moving at a faster pace to paraphrase it. And enrichment is allowing them to, to dive deeper. And I think there's been a struggle for middle school science with regards to that. And I think as we are doing great work, it sounds like in the district at looking through articulation. Through, you know, K through, K through twelve. I think it would be really important to look at that for our science program and to have that be a continuum. And I think, you know, looking in some ways maybe at the model of our math program as an option. You know, we have a lot of students who can, who are very science-focused in the high school and there's so many wonderful opportunities there and you have some kids who have a hard time getting all of that in. And so are there ways to, to look at that, you know? So I think really looking outside the box. There are, there are districts in the Bronx who give kids physics in eighth grade. You know, do you look at bringing biology down into eighth grade? If you're really looking at a K through, and now we have a dedicated science time in elementary school. Do you really look at that process all the way through? But in any case, I think it's quite clear unless the board at some point changes this. The ALP program is meant to be for above-grade level students. And it's meant to be an accelerated and enriched program. And I think we need to do that unless the board decides otherwise. And so I, I really encourage that to happen. Come back later for other stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski.
Sure. So I just wanted to make sure I understood. We all recognize that there isn't an accelerated program for science in middle school. But did I just hear that that was going to change next year, meaning calendar year or academic year?
Yeah, you wouldn't change a master schedule in the middle of a school year. And when this really came in initially, you know, it was last year and it's for COVID. It has to do with cohorting. So starting out this year, we still have, not only our students in elementary, but our sixth graders who are also don't have an opportunity to be vaccinated. We started out in COVID again. So what they're talking about is next school year.
So by next school year, so the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year will have an actual advanced science class and offerings for our middle school students.
We had advanced science class pre-COVID, but it actually, the, the content was the same as the on-grade level. Which I think is where there was some misunderstanding from some of the board members that thought it was actually different. And we're hoping to actually progress that from where we were pre-COVID and actually have a better enhancement. And I think just to build on what Gay Tom said, I know I had shared this with her when I was a middle school principal, are in, I had advanced science and we put it in and like our eighth graders did intro to chemistry and a semester of intro to physics. But you also had to parallel that with being in Algebra One, because if you weren't in at least Algebra One, you didn't have the skill set really for a lot of the chemistry, but it was a truly advanced pathway. So we're going to explore all of those different options because now I think we know that's what the board has wanted. And we're hearing now that's what you want, is all of us being new and don't have the background. We have it now.
Okay. And then I had just some questions, just for clarification purpose with, with respect to elementary school out. Is it the case that if you test in for science? But not for math, you will still do science and not, I'm sorry. If you test in for math but not English, you can still do the math versus the English, meaning you don't have, if you test in for one, you're in for one. If you test in for both, you're in for both, but you're not. If you test in for one, you're not in for both. How is that working?
I think you're talking about what we did for COVID. That was last year where they were. And so I think that's what you're saying. Going next year, we're hoping that we're not in the same situation we're in. We're better this year than we were last year. Last year it was two large super blocks and they were in for everything. And that was to keep the classroom sizes smaller, have less mixing of students across the different cohorts. This year, if they are, you're, you're either in the STEM block or the humanities block. And that's what Mark was referencing before. Is if you're in the, the humanities block where you're English, you can't just qualify for science. But next year they're fixing that in the, in their schedules.
Can you say that again, please?
Yeah, you lost me on that last part. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we actually talked about this, I think at the last board, the last time we talked about curriculum. If they're in, if they're on the English for ALP on that side of reading and literacy. Then you can't just jump across and do science right now because it's tied into the math. And every teacher doesn't teach the math and the science at exactly the same time. They have a block of time. So one teacher may say, I'm going to do science for sixty minutes today and do math for thirty. And another teacher may say, I'm going to do my math for sixty minutes. Next year, they're going to put that tighter on the schedule across the district. So everybody has a well-defined science so that students can be in the literacy side and also take science or the math side and also take science. So they're fixing that on the schedule.
But sorry to interrupt here. Remember, everyone's been grandfathered right now, so it's irrelevant for this year.
Understood. I just want to make sure we're going back to that.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Ms. Hirsch.
So I know I sent in a bunch of questions and some of you, some of which were addressed in, in the, you know, presentation and some I'll just wait for follow-up on later, but I know it's been said by before, but our advanced learning programs exceptional and of great benefit to students in school. One of the main topics of discussion we've had here over the years is what is the purpose of ALP? And it is something we need to discuss as a board. Gayton read part of policy, which is what I was going to do. But it's been on our list of policies that need to be updated, which is why I think the board needs to have that as a discussion. Because ALP's not just about a curriculum that's being delivered. It's also about how it's being delivered to our students. There's an educational philosophy for advanced programs regarding to level of inquiry, rigor and speed. And based both on the need and how it's being taught. So I do think it's something we as a board should be discussing. And I, I know I'd asked about looking into student data and a long-term review for students who are placed in ALP in elementary versus those who've joined in middle and how they compare to their peers who are not in the advanced courses in the lower grades, but are all taking AP and honors at the high school. We just had an in-depth discussion on AP. So I know that it is covering a lot of our students. And I know you guys said that you were looking into that data and hopefully we'll see some more of that later this year. But I just wanted to get some clarity on how the changes made to the educational block schedule at the elementary school, the new ninety-minute blocks. May have affected some of the out learning curriculum and how they benefit or support the educational needs and outcomes for the students who, who are in the program. You know, they could be very positive or, you know, or impacted curriculum in different ways. So I was just wondering how that might have impacted the curriculum.
Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to that. And I want to go back to before COVID. You know, it was, it was commonplace that there wasn't enough time to teach literacy appropriately with the 60-minute block. And the extension to a 90-minute block certainly affords us the opportunity to integrate reading and writing. Obviously, having social studies in the block currently provides a wrinkle. It was a COVID-influenced change. We're looking forward to it being a temporary change and lifting it. Could we lift it in the second marking period? We could. But I need to explain what would be the ramifications of that, which is by, by lifting the social studies out of that block. And having principals identify an individual time for social studies in the general ed setting. We would be impacting when we are providing intervention services. And we talked a lot about that just a few moments ago, how critical those intervention services are. Especially now that we have full-time math interventionists in every building and we have our literacy support. That would impact their ability to service those students. So I, I, I'd be remiss to re, to revisiting it at any point prior to next school year. So what I will say is this is a challenging year for our advanced learning teachers. Ms. Oregan can certainly speak to how she anticipated that and what professional learning she did plan and provide to her staff. Prior to the start of the school year. But again, I think it's really important just to stress the fact that these were temporary changes due to COVID. These are not ideal situations and we're looking forward to moving past them. Bonnie, did you want to speak a little bit about the professional learning and teacher readiness going into this year?
Yes, on, at the end of August, we were able to meet with each of the teachers. About the curriculum changes that we made, which included all of the supports that they needed. In order to meet the wide range of students that they have within their classrooms. In language arts and in math. And Dr. Marcus and Mr. Reed can also talk more specifically about those also because they worked very closely with me on those documents.
You want us to go further? You want to take another, have us take another question?
Well, I was just asking how those block changes, I know we've said for years that, you know, teachers have always said they don't have enough time. Especially when the students were in ELA and they'd be in, out for reading and then go back to their classroom for writing. I know it's probably a great benefit for students to be able to stay with their same teachers, to be able to work on reading and writing as they go hand in hand. So I was just wondering how these two STEM, these two different blocks, if it's changed what curriculum is being delivered and how it's being delivered. I know we have a student cohort now. It's been grandfathered. I'd love to see data on how that change and the longer blocks have sort of affected the students in the program. Honestly, it could be an incredibly positive response. I just don't know. I know you don't have enough time necessarily to have seen how that happened, the, the data. But I just didn't know if it had changed the curriculum that's being delivered, because that's what we're hearing from parents.
Yeah, I think the, the burn rate on that data is a little bit too short right now to jump to any conclusions. But Karen, it's a, it's a great question to ask and we're, we're happy to circle back on that.
Okay. That data I know is too soon to hear, but I just asked, with the change in the block schedule. What changes have been made and how has it affected to the, affected the curriculum that's being delivered in those programs? I, I will, I can go further into detail, but we've heard from parents that there's concern that some of the longer term. Things that the students have, have learned in past, in the past, in those classes, they won't have time for because the blocks have been merged. I know that doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad thing. I'm just asking what changes have occurred because of the change in the block.
Bonnie, do you want to talk about teaching within the block?
I think the, what I've been hearing is more about the language arts and the changes within the language arts. Because what we did was we did a full integration between the reading and the writing. And that there is a rumor out there that we're no longer doing Shakespeare. It's just been moved to, the students are still able to interact with, with Shakespearean language and the culture. It's just been moved to a different portion of the, of the year. Dr. Marcus, did you want to talk more, talk a little bit about that also? And about the word study and how the word study has evolved across the entire school system?
Absolutely. Thank you, Bonnie. So as Bonnie rightly pointed out, Shakespeare is still happening. I know there's a rumor about that, just in a different unit. Also, all fourth and fifth graders across the entire district are partaking in our word study program. I know that there's questions about the word master, a word masters program. That is a voluntary program that students across the entire district can still partake in. But all of that word study, that really enriching rigorous curriculum is in the word study program and not word masters. Word masters is open to all students across the district with multiple levels of entry.
Let's have Mike and Tara talk a little bit about that STEM block.
Yep. So I can speak to the math portion of this. Structurally, not much has changed. We are still, in third grade, we're doing a year and a half of curriculum. In fourth grade, we're doing a year and a half of curriculum. And with our new program and their compacted pathways. We're actually doing a year and a half of curriculum in our fifth grade ALP. So in the past, we only taught sixth grade curriculum, which then left those kids with a, a little bit of a gap going into pre-algebra. Now our kids that are in ALP, fifth grade math. Will be taking our 6A course or six advanced course, which is half of seventh grade as well as sixth grade. And that tracks them very nicely into pre-algebra six without any gaps whatsoever. So with our new program, there's no real structural changes. And then within the, the block of time, the 90 minutes, there's no real changes to the math delivery.
The single change to the science delivery that is happening on a daily basis right now within science. So we are dedicating 30 minutes a day to science. And obviously our ALP learners are learning at a more accelerated pace. So they do have time for those extension activities that are embedded into the science curriculum at the three through five level. With that being said, we are also providing professional learning for our ALP STEM teachers regarding TOVA data literacy labs. Because we want to look more at those power standards in the science and engineering practices around data. And helping to support our teachers to support students of science within the ALP STEM block.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for addressing that. I have to tell you that that sounds like in some regards, at least in the math side and everything, that it's, it's a positive change. That there was always that issue with the fifth grade, only getting the one year and then going off to math and, and middle school and having to figure out how to learn that half a year. So thank you. And I know you've already addressed math and the science, middle school science, excuse me, middle school science. So I will turn this over to somebody else and come back with another question.
Ms. Downey.
I just want to go back to the grandfathering and just in terms of stresses it might be putting on the system. Now, I just want to be clear, this year, the students who tested in for this year were not doing the grandfathering system. Like if a student tested into language arts this year as a new student, let's say a new third grader. They are not automatically placed in math as well like they were last year, correct?
You're correct.
Okay. So we're talking about a smaller number as we go through each year. I just want to make sure, I think I heard it a little bit there. They were giving the teachers the tools to deal with these wider range of abilities. But also are we finding that the size of the groups is manageable? Because I've heard a little bit about that, you know, in some schools, the ALP cohorts are actually, because of this grant, you know, you have larger groups of students. And whether the teachers, it's working for both the teachers and for the students. Do we have any kind of feedback on that? I don't know from Mark or Dr. Jones.
Yeah, just even when I go back to the first year that I was here, I was shocked in the budget that regardless of whether your, your building has 200 students or it had 450. You had 1.7 ALP, period. And now every once in a while, we, they would add a little bit at Riverside usually is where it would be. So your numbers are always different sizes. And it's, you know, it is a classroom, so it just depends on in that building, if there are fewer students that are eligible, that teacher could have fewer students in their room. If they have 20, they have 20. It, because the ALP classroom, just like a gen ed classroom would run because it's a content area. So it's always been like that. I will say, one of the things in COVID that you probably remember from S or II funding was we bumped up all the ALP teachers to at least a 2.0. And Bonnie, I, I might ask, on Riverside, are they still 2.0 or are they slightly higher?
They're 2.0 because their class sizes with any individual class meet the class size guidelines.
All right, Mr. Shear. Dr. Marcus, can I go back to something you said? I just needed a clarification. You talked about word study and then you talked about word masters. Can you just clarify for the ALP? I had thought they weren't doing word vocabulary building. Let me just use regular terminology, building a vocabulary. In the ALP room itself. I thought that was all done in the general classroom. Is that?
That is correct. All, all the word study program is happening in their homeroom classes.
Okay. And is, do, I know you're new here. Do, I. One of my kids was an ALP, one wasn't. I don't remember how it used to be done. I'm trying to understand it. A, at first, my first question is, is that a change?
Yes.
Okay. So your plan is to go back or keep doing it the way you're doing it now?
Currently, we're going to keep it the way that we're doing it right now with the word study being implemented in the homeroom classes.
And what are you going to do next year?
As of right now.
Is that the same question? Is that the same answer for next year?
Yes, it is.
Okay. What, I, I, what program is actually being used in elementary? What is the standard program that is being used for building vocabulary? What is it called? What is it called?
In our grades four and five, it's called word study.
It's called word study. We must use a standardized material for that, correct?
Yes, it is. It's by Sadler.
It's by who?
Sadler.
Sadlinger?
Sadler. This was a program that was implemented by my predecessor.
Sadler, you just said, right, right? Is that something? I, I did not attend the curric, because of business meeting, I couldn't attend the curriculum committee ELA meeting the other day. I only attended the social studies one in the afternoon. Did you go over this in that meeting and is your intent to continue to use that? Or are you going to wind up bringing to the board a recommendation to change it to something else?
Well, the curriculum advisory committees were only dealt with the middle school curriculum and not our elementary program.
Got it, got it.
So that really wasn't.
It's not a topic.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And so sad, sadler. Can, can you just shoot me a note with what the name of that is and, and then the reference to the actual program we're using?
Sure.
And then is that, that is, is, is expected to be consistent across all elementary schools, correct? That's the expectation that's been communicated to principals?
Yes, it is. And there is a dedicated time throughout elementary school, fourth and fifth grade classrooms that attack.
And what kind of materials do kids have? Well, never mind, separately. Keep going. This is about ALP. Never mind.
All right, I'm, just, I want to make sure with Dr. Marcus, I have this right. I think one of the reasons why the word study was moved into the, into the classroom for everybody. Is it also enables the ALP students to do writing in the ALP classroom, which was missing for years and years and years. So it's rectified a, a broken problem. And I've done some school visits. Actually, I've visited all the schools since the beginning of the school year. And I've actually seen the word study being used in the fourth, fifth grade classroom. So it is being used across the district, which was actually really nice to see. And as a father of two former ALP students, I hated word masters. And one of the reasons I hated it and disliked it, and I think we probably do a heck of a lot better, is we weren't really teaching kids how to study. And so now every student who's doing word study should be learning how to study. Which is a really good thing for elementary kids because they will need that skill when they get to our middle schools and we were missing that. And Dr. Francis, did you have something?
So I wanted to look at some of the numbers in terms of enrollment for the middle school. And there were two things that jumped out at me with that. One is historically, we've known this and it was a problem since the creation of the advanced sixth grade science. But then if you look at the number of students in the middle school classes. It is typically two to three times the number of students that you see in math or English. And that really stands out as a significant difference. And the other thing that I had not realized, and I don't know if this is new or old. Is in terms of English, I was surprised to see that there are two sections for each middle school with regards to that. So generally speaking, as was stated earlier, this is considered an advanced learning program. Historically, I had heard, you know, in, in some of the, the literature, looking at that. Or if you, if you heard from Joyce von Tasselbaska, it was often in that 10 to 15% range is kind of the number that was looked at. And somewhere in this report, it talks about that 10% number. So I think that we're, we're looking at sort of two extremes here that don't really match that. One is the science being way over. And then if you look at, for example, I pulled up the enrollment at Riverside. And if you, I think there's, you know, 800 or some students there. And if you looked at 10%, that would be 80 students. So I'm not quite sure why we have those two different ideas in terms of how to allot students to those, those classes. But I think that's something that needs to be addressed. And one more not quite related thing, but just, we did have initially, maybe in the second year, because there had been a delay in implementing advanced science for sixth grade. Initially because they did want to create a curriculum. What had been done, which I don't think the board was thrilled with, was they basically gave them the on-level curriculum. But they had created additional project-based or other types of things to do. But even with that, given probably the expansion of the, the students in there and maybe the criteria that was used. There was talk at that time that teachers were having trouble because the level of reading that was required for some of these projects was well above. The ability of some of the students there and that they were really struggling. And that in response to that, those things were changed to essentially lower the level to allow students to have better ability to grasp that. But I think it's really important to understand that historically, reading ability had been a big part of evaluating how, you know, students being able to. Really fully appreciate the advanced learning science. And so I think as you're looking at criteria and you're looking at the curriculum, to really take that into account in terms of evaluating that. And I think to bring us back to that more typical 15%. And I think one of the other things that was changed around the same time was the creation of the ninth grade advanced sign, English. And again, sort of as a weird contrast that has very strict entrance criteria. So I think we really don't have a reasonable consistency across our, our different advanced courses. And while things are divided up in weird ways in terms of how advanced classes are sort of supervised, administered and, and, and taken care of. We're talking about the same kids and I think it would be appropriate to have a bit more consistency in terms of how those programs are implemented.
All right, Ms. Stowe.
That's a very good point on 113A, Gayton. Just real fast, the placement process for middle school math, I did not see that in here. Has that changed? I know it used to be based purely on a star score. I know we're not doing that anymore. We have the Z score system, but I didn't see what we were using at all. Do you know?
Now, the Z score, Bonnie had shared the other day, I guess that's what we've always used. You just haven't seen it written like this. But Bonnie, if you would answer that criteria for how they're qualifying.
The Z score or the middle school math?
Middle school math. Sorry, I confused it to middle school math.
Oh, middle school math is still under development. Mr. Reed is working with his team and myself on what that placement protocol is going to be. Because we won't be doing the star, of course, this year.
So Bonnie, I can speak a little bit more to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so Bonnie was in another program meeting this past Wednesday, but what I was doing was meeting with our sixth grade teachers. And we focused on what are the skills that students need to be successful in six, six advanced and pre-algebra six. And then as well as the learning characteristics that we also want to see those students exhibiting. So what we're trying to do is as much as possible, use the resources that we're already naturally having the kids use in fifth grade. Whether that be ALP or the regular ed classroom to identify which placement they should go into. And then we're taking a look specifically at certain things like operations with fractions and decimals. And things like that to sort of differentiate who would be going into six advanced and pre-algebra six. and things like that to sort of differentiate who would be going into six advanced and pre-algebra six. So we don't have it completely fleshed out yet. I have sort of a, a rough idea of how we're going to do it. But what we're trying to do is avoid high stakes testing that, you know, it's one snapshot on one day. We're trying to look more comprehensively and make it more of a conversation with all stakeholders, inclusive of the teacher, the parent, and, and the student in, in the placement for next year. So working through that right now. And that will become part of our process of our transition meetings when we meet with our fifth to sixth grade, you know, counterparts, which is a natural process that we already have in place. So I would say under construction, but we're on the right track.
Mike, perhaps we could bring that to the board when you give the update on big ideas in, in November.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, anything else? Ms. Hirsch.
So, Mr. Reed, you just touched on, or you made a point that's gonna bring me to my next point, which is that, you know, we don't want to look at add more higher stakes testing, and we need to look at students multiple different data points when we're putting them in. I know the report shared some information about 2E student enrollment in ALP. I know we briefly all discussed this the other day, but I think that this is an area where we're still missing, we may still be missing students as not all students that are twice exceptional have IEPs or 504s or even diagnoses in elementary or middle school years. I know both of my students were in advanced programs and would not land in the numbers you see in this report because the school did not have a 504 IP for them. So I'm wondering, you know, and this is not a question you may be able to necessarily ask, answer tonight, but I know that with, you know, we're now, we're not just looking at scores, we're looking at more of a fuller picture of our students. And I'm sort of hoping that we're gonna find a way to sort of make sure that we are not missing other 2E students. Those students on the cusp that may not be able to show proficiency when taking a test because they have, you know, auditory or visually, you know, visual, you know, issues or whatever it might be. So I'm hoping that you guys are thinking about ways that we can make sure that we're not overlooking students with learning differences who may also benefit highly from advanced programming at the elementary level. We're looking at our AP scores tonight, and we can see how incredible our students are doing once they get to the high school, but we don't want to miss them when they're early on. So is that something you guys are gonna be considering going forward?
Absolutely, Karen.
Actually, I am working with Stacy on that. The special ed coordinator on the 2E components. Met with her, I get, just today about 2E students and how we can get more students into our advanced classes.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing more information about that at some point later this year, maybe. But I appreciate that you guys are taking the time to look at that.
Dr. Francis.
I'm sorry, one more thing. My understanding was with big ideas, there was a capability to allow students to move more at a mastery-based or a self-paced level in terms of math. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
So two things with that, I would say, one is obviously that should support all of our students, including our advanced learners, because we do have kids who end up in that linear algebra and in high school, and, and those are kids who probably can be moving at a faster pace even than ALP and elementary school. The second is that it seems to me that, you know, the good digital tools, which I understand big ideas is, is supposed to be one of those, should be keeping data for these students individually on terms of what they have mastered. So I, I keep sort of suggesting, keep, I mean, this has been years now, but that, you know, our, our mastery-based tools, digital tools should really allow us to get a very good picture of what a student has mastered. And I think that should take a huge onus out of a high stakes test. But, but also not be something that's completely subjective. I mean, you can have objective data on what a student has mastered and is ready to do in middle school based on what they have done with their big ideas work in fifth grade. So I, I find it a little surprising that there's sort of this sense of needing to go either with subjective information or to go with, you know, only this high stakes test. It seems to me that we have an obvious answer in terms of being able to use data to make these decisions without basing it all on one single test.
Yeah, so I'm sorry if I was unclear before. We're trying to not have one single stakes test. That, that, that's the whole purpose of our process. What I will say is with our transition for our teachers into the new program, it has a very robust digital component. But what we've heard loud and clear from the community is, is wanting to return to more of a paper and pencil. So we're really focusing on that to start the year. And, and just getting teachers used to the format, getting teachers used to, to the program. And then, you know, a, as we get more experienced with it, feel more comfortable with it, and start to add more of the digital components, we'll be able to track longitudinally from year to year. So right now, it'll continue to be a conversation with the teachers as they track the data they normally have over the years. But we do have that component to track that. But, you know, there's so many different parts, moving parts with this new system that we're, we're trying to keep it simple for the teachers so that they can just get used to the delivery of the content. And then we'll, we'll start to build out, you know, that acceleration and tracking of data as we move forward year to year.
All right, thank you. We are now at the 11:30 hour. I'm not seeing any other hands, so we are going to move on. Thank you all very much. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more discussion around ALP for years to come. All right, next up is our tech program executive summary. So Mr. Ting, you're going to do this in an executive fashion, very short, right? Because we know you're doing great work. Uh-oh, did we lose Mike?
Okay, hi, sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I will try and do this. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I will try and do this very quickly. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Ting, and my role in the school district is to help our staff and students with all things technology. Now, before I begin, I'd like to thank the board and the superintendent for the opportunity to speak tonight. I understand and acknowledge that we are here primarily to discuss education and that time is a limited resource and also the late hour. So I will try to be brief and just hit the highlights from the technology executive summary report. So let's get started. Our school, our school district is a large environment. How large? We have 17 locations that consist of 16 schools and the central office. We have over 3,000 computers. We have over 600 smartboards, over 1,100 wireless access points. And each day, there's over 10,000 devices connected to Wi-Fi simultaneously. Now, with all this technology, there must be proper support and maintenance to make sure that everything keeps running smoothly. Last year, we received almost 16,000 documented support tickets at the help desk. This is an uptick in the number of tickets we have received on average over the past several years. Now, that being said, we cannot consider the last school year to be an average year and will continue tracking this statistic and its trend for the future. Over the past several years, we have seen the support satisfaction rating rise and plateau in the mid 90% range. I'm happy to see that with the increase in the number of support tickets last year, our satisfaction rating has remained high. This slide shows the top five categories of technical support by number of tickets. The top three remain the same as the year before with Chromebook support, computer desktop support, and iPad support taking the top spots. That being said, last year, we saw an increase in tickets for Aspen and student email, which very likely can be attributed to the support of remote learning. We had some significant accomplishments last year with the complete overhaul of the district's telephone systems, cybersecurity improvements, the high availability of the computer network, the support of remote learning, and the implementation of a brand-new help desk. So here I have some screen grabs from the new help desk system. As you can see, this is something us in IT can really nerd out over. I did want to take a second and give a shout out here to Rich Pucci, our IT staff member at COSCOB, who has been the most valuable player in terms of IT support since the rollout of the new system several months ago. Great job, Mr. Pucci. Finally, finally, and this brings us to the end of the presentation. I'd like to mention some of the IT projects that we're working on this year. So for this school year, we're looking to make improvements in the resilience of our computer network by installing backup internet connections at several key locations. We're looking to improve the quality of the cellular service inside Greenwich High School. We will continue with our cybersecurity improvements. And we would like to begin the relocation of the main district server room, which is located at Havemeyer, from the basement of the building to a better spot on the ground floor. Now, why are we relocating the server room? Well, because it's in a location where there is too much risk of failure from environmental hazards. There are pressurized water lines, steam lines, and various other plumbing lines running through the room right on top of the racks that contain all of our server and network equipment. Furthermore, the location of the server room is in the basement, directly underneath the men's room that's on the ground floor. So I've got four photos here of the server room as it currently stands. Now, here's a shot of the ceiling directly above one of our server racks. Those large pipes lead to the toilet of the men's room above. Here's a shot of a pressurized copper line in what I think is a waistline above our server racks. Here's a picture of multiple pressurized copper lines running right next to another rack full of server equipment. And finally, here's a picture of an exposed steam line in the corner of the server room. Yes, that label does say it was last rebuilt 21 years ago. So as you can see, we need to do something about this situation, and we'll hopefully begin the work this year. These photos can be considered the before photos, and I'm looking forward to sharing the after pictures when we're finished with the project. Now, before I end my presentation, I'd like to recognize, acknowledge, and praise a member of the IT department. This is because I'm the only one who gets to speak at these meetings, but I'm not the only one that's doing the work. My team is exceptional. And believe me, I know how fortunate I am to have such a great team. Tonight, I'd like to single out one team member so that everyone knows how awesome he is. We have a 30-plus-year employee named Tony Tripodi, who has dedicated most of his adult life to the support of our school district. Tony is an absolute rock star. And even after 30 years, he's still the first person to get into his truck and head out to a school when something goes wrong. He is one of the, if not the biggest factor in the reliability, exceptional uptime, and availability of the computer network. I can't give Tony enough praise for the work that he's done and the work he continues to do day in and day out so that the staff and students here at Greenwich Public Schools are able to do their work without interruption. Thank you, Tony. You are amazing, and we're lucky to have you on the team.
Mike, thank you very much, and thank you for calling Tony out. So I got to know him a bit when we were designing New Lab and getting the school open, and he was amazing. Just very, very helpful and knowledgeable and got us where we needed to be. A couple of things. One, you're missing something big from your presentation. You guys rolled out laptops, brand-new Chromebooks to all of the middle schoolers and high schoolers this year. And that was a, was a huge deal. Some of the learnings that you'd brought to us last year about the, that the Chromebooks just not being up to what we needed them to be, especially for remote learning. You also mentioned the high school. You were talking about cell service in the high school. Self-service around the high school, when on the grounds, is lacking, to be nice about it. With the new stadium, there'll be power out there that might be used for cell service and/or improved Wi-Fi access. So, you know, stick that on your to-do list and some, and then I think Dr. Jones is telling me it's something you're looking to do next year, which is awesome. So thank you for everything you and your team are doing to keep this up and running. Technology is just one piece of, of how we are working today and making our students ready for the world outside. So the work you guys are doing is amazingly valued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? And thank you, Mike. You're, you're free to, I don't know, sleep maybe. All right, our next item is the Policy Governance Committee update with new policies. This would be a first read, so Ms. Downey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bernstein. So in the process of doing the policy crosswalk and reviewing policies, there is a, we've been reviewing the lists of Cabe record, required and recommended policies. And in that process, we realized we had some required policies that were not in place. So the Policy Governance Committee has been looking at various ones. This is not an exhaustive list by any stretch, but this is a process. I think as we were retiring procedures, which we need to continue to do as well, we're also providing new policies for the board to review and ultimately approve. As the hour is late, I believe everyone has the ability to read these or has read them. Again, this is a first read for us. If anybody has any particular questions, we can discuss them tonight. But they ultimately will obviously not be voted on until at least the next board meeting. And depending on, because we have new board members, if worse comes to worse, we can always defer a vote. But at the next board meeting, if people are not prepared, but I would like them to be so, so we can at least move the process along and have a first read this evening.
All right, Ms. Kowalski.
Yeah, I just, I actually, Christina, I shared that concern in the sense that we have, will have three new board members on for, and they will not have had an opportunity to ask questions beforehand. And these policies, I, I understand the difference between required versus recommended. I mean, these, these policies are, they're hefty. There's a lot going on in them, and I think that that merits the opportunity for our three new board members to be able to have an opportunity, an adequate amount of time to dive in and ask questions. Particularly along the lines of, you know, I've got questions concerning whether or not the board is making a, a change with respect to the, you know, food services, right? Where if we're opting in and how, what the implication is, because we haven't always done that in the past. So I just, I think that the, the best way to do it is to defer it, given also the hour tonight. But an opportunity for our three new board members that'll be coming on, a full and fair opportunity to ask questions and move forward.
I think what I would suggest is that in an ideal world, if we, I'm not saying we have to have a discussion tonight. I would like to keep them on for a first read, but not, and then we can decide when we're gonna vote on them. Just because then the existing board members will maybe have an opportunity to ask questions via email or have a dialogue if there's specific language questions. I'm happy to have an offline discuss. I, I know you also, three of us have already had discussions about them, so I realize that, you know, I'm happy to have discussion or meeting to talk about them with you, and we can do that separately, not at a board meeting, and then we, our, our new board members can read them. I know at least some of the candidates were here this evening, so they're available for their review, even if it's not commentary. But I would just like to keep the, the potential, and maybe we vote on one or two of them because we have additional ones that we've been working at that we're also gonna be presenting. So there's a queue of constantly, I believe me, it's like a, a never-ending. I also will point out, it's helpful for the administration because there's regulations attached to a couple of them, some of which are required by state statute that we have to approve the regulations. And it might be as simple as we approve the regulations at the next meeting, if depending, you know, there's, there's a variety of ways we can address it. But I would like to kind of keep them in the queue moving along would be my preference. I think Dr. Francis had a question.
I was just gonna make two quick comments. One is, you know, I know it's sort of in the regulation, but it looks like some of it's also in the policy itself. But in both the- But in both the discrimination and the suicide prevention, it talks about contact person. I would really suggest that, you know, we have something where it's an actual person and a contact. I think we have that in some of our, some of our stuff that's for special ed. I think it would be really nice to have it here as well, because it's like you've got pages and pages of forms to fill out, but if someone really has a question or someone they need to contact, I think that name should be included. And the other one, I think, as you're mentioning, both in the food and the nutrition one, I just was questioning whether we actually follow all of those particular things, and I don't remember all of it, but I know at some point we had.
Dr. Jones has participated in the discussions, and they've gone by their food service chair.
Okay, Mr.?
I mean, I understand there's a lot, but you know, sometimes our kids get a lot of homework and some nights you don't. So I think that we have to keep moving forward. I know when you guys came on the board, or maybe it was when I, when I came on the board, I had a vote on policies right away. Frankly, if you're coming on the board, you should be doing your homework now. And also, I mean, more maybe equally important, I shouldn't say more important, but the new board votes on a budget that they're not sitting in the first meeting as presented. So this is just the way it goes. Business has to go on. I think this is the first read, and you can send comments to the policy committee, but I think we should keep moving forward.
Well, and I guess I'll just note for agenda planning purposes, it'll be listed as a second read and an action item. It does not have to be actioned, or the entirety doesn't have to be actioned. You all can take up that discussion at the November business meeting. I won't be there. I won't be watching. But you're free to do as you wish, but thinking back to how this has gone, it's true, these things, the business of the board goes on. The candidates should be paying attention to the meetings. They should be reviewing the materials that are there for them, and if the board decides to not take it up at that point, that's fine, too. But at least it will be listed there. It is our practice to take the second read as an action item. Again, we have definitely put off voting on things that have been up for second reads, so they can go for further review. It's not a problem. All right, with that, we're going to move on, but anybody, okay, Mr. Sherrod, go ahead.
Christina, I won't be here. Peter won't be here. Gay Tom won't be here. Yeah, take it for what it's worth. It kind of reflects badly on the people who are here, that they had a first read at midnight with no public around, nobody watching. And then you want to pass 36 pages at the next meeting. For your own image as a board, you might want to think about that, but maybe you don't care. I'm moving off that. I'm moving off. That's just my input to you. Do whatever you want. I won't be here, and I won't be watching it either. I would tell you, though, in the policies that you have, there are probably some substantial, I would call mistakes, things you don't know, you're tying the hands of the board forever by doing. A good example would be food services. In your food services, you're prescribing, first of all, the policy is written as exceptionally low level of detail. The policies are starting to look like procedures. They're not looking like policies. So you guys, I don't know why that's happening in that committee, but you should probably be a little more careful about that. Like when you're prescribing at the nth degree, a person and a job and who they report to, that would never be in a policy in prior. That would have been at the full discretion of the superintendent, so the superintendent could make a reorganization. In this case, as an example, the superintendent ever wants to reorganize, they got to come to the board for approval, because it violates the policy. I wouldn't encourage you to do that. The second thing that's in there is, I don't know if you know this, but in prior years when we had food services tied to federal mandates, the way you've tied them, we have numerous times voted not to follow those. A, so we can have more nutritious food for our kids. That's part one. And part two is staying with those federal programs would have cost us upwards of a half a million dollars for less nutritious food. So you probably want to go back and take a look at when that happened. The person to call, by the way, to tell you all about that subject is a gentleman named Ben Branyan. He was around and what have you. So you've got a couple of policy areas there where you might have been taking these things from Cave, because how they're written. But in actual case, the application of them in Greenwich, which Cave never worries about, they're writing for, I don't know, Meriden or Wellington or whatever. They wind up having really bad implementation in Greenwich. They're great for other districts that have nothing. As, you know, and you may go back and look at that, because you might wind up creating a trapdoor for yourselves.
Thank you. We'll do that. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, hearing no other comments, we're going to move on to the next discussion item, which is budget transfers. Mr. O'Keefe.
Evening. There's three informational budget transfers not requiring board action. The first transfer is a $13,000 transfer within the athletic accounts to cover local live expense for athletic events. The second is a transfer within special ed for $18,482 to cover a prior year tuition payment. And the third is a transfer of $660,000 from math to CIPOL to facilitate the purchase of ELA and social studies instruction materials. And recall that this, this 660 was originally budgeted in math, but we were able to pay for the textbooks utilizing full-year 21 funds.
All right, any questions or discussion? And thank you for that last point for our friends from the BET that are watching. This is the discussion that I know we had with Leslie Tarkington and Leslie Moriarty, just as they're prepping for their budget work about the pull forward of the math textbooks and how that funding was being used this year. All right, so no other discussion. We're going to move on then to our action items. So the first action item is the old Greenwich School education specifications. Do we have a motion to accept the, because it's an action, and we need a motion to put it on the table, so do we have a motion? And it would be to prove the specs as presented. Karen?
I make the motion to approve the old Greenwich Ed specs as provided and set forth in your packet of materials.
All right, is there a second for that? Ms. Downey, thank you. All right, discussions. Who, I don't know, Dr. Jones, who's kicking this off for you?
I believe Russ is still with us, and he was going to do just literally a few minutes, just as a reminder for everybody.
Do we need that? Can we just call the vote?
Given, given the impact of what this is and the capital project, I think we ought to have a brief discussion about it. So Mr. Davidson.
Good evening. I'm still with you. It's still, it's still Thursday. I don't know. Can I share my screen?
Yes, go ahead, Russ. You can share your screen. Russ, it's just saying you started screen sharing, but we're actually not seeing anything.
Yep.
And it stopped screen sharing. All right, maybe you can give a quick verbal update. Russ, we've lost your audio.
About now.
We got your back. Thanks.
Okay. Just, this has been going on for about 15 months. This is the same Ed spec that you saw last December. It's for the reconstruction and expansion of the old Greenwich. Basically, it's a four-classroom addition. And the reason there's four classrooms is not to expand the capacity of the building. It's to replace and right-size the building. So one room is needed, because we're going to move the main office down to the ground floor. Two rooms are undersized, and they're not accessible, and they're prone to flooding, which you heard about earlier. And one existing room is undersized, and we need that room to cut through to make the corridor to the new addition. So the key categories here, this is about accessibility. New three-stop elevator, three ramps and a lift to make all areas accessible, puts the main entrance on grade and makes it accessible. The gym and auditorium entrance will be accessible with a new ramp, and student toilet rooms will be renovated to comply with ADA on all levels. It's also about security. A new secure vestibule for visitor management at the new main entrance, and a front entrance that is visible by staff and security personnel. And the main office will be adjacent to the main entrance. And the two activity spaces and outdoor classrooms for students will now be in a fully enclosed courtyard. And we have no classrooms located immediately adjacent to the driveway, which is a little bit vulnerable. It also focuses on educational adequacy with the four new classrooms we talked about. And we get pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, first-grade classrooms all grouped together and all on the ground floor. You also restore adequate support spaces for the speech and psychologist. And you're able to expand the nurses suite. It's a, and the fourth category is health and safety. We're getting the two classrooms that are below the floodplain. They will no longer be classrooms. It'll be converted to a multipurpose space, which coincidentally was its original use when it was built. You're going to get completely new heating and ventilating and air conditioning systems for all areas that currently do not have them. New windows, new communications, fire alarm, and emergency lighting systems will be upgraded and replaced. So I think it's a reasonable sort of minimum project. And as was earlier mentioned, it's significantly less than what was proposed in the master plan. And I'll leave it, I'll leave it there for questions.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Kowalski, you were the member of the feasibility committee, so I want to give you the first opportunity.
I have to say that the committee, who probably did stay awake to hear all of this, did an excellent job. We came in and looked at the things that we categorize as wants, needs, and must-haves, and really focused on making this school, fixing this school in the categories that Russ identified with respect to, you know, health, safety, and putting the classrooms back in in good shape, not flooding, because they do have a sewage problem that floods, and it's flooded three times already this year, which is just unacceptable on any level, and particularly in Greenwich. And also addressed the ADA issues, which we have faced and obviously had a complaint on last year that we need to address. What we have come up with here, and I agree with Russ, is we have put together a Ed spec that meets those needs and does not drive for any fancy extras. And I was proud of the group that came up with this. We worked very hard. This is what their community wants. I agree with it. I think it's the right size. And I'm really happy with how this turned out.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think it's great. I worry about what we're not doing, right? This is a scaled-down version. And the thing that worries me the most is we're not looking in the deep, dark corners of the building. We're not looking behind the walls and the ceilings. Basically, we're not learning from what happened in North Myannis, and I think that's something that the board going forward will certainly need to think about as you move these projects forward in the older buildings. This building was designed before 1900. You know, I just worry about the very older parts of the building where we've slapped paint on, you know, maybe put a drop ceiling in, but really didn't pay attention to what was really going on. This is great. This absolutely needs to be done, the same as Julian Curtis. There are needs that have to happen. We're talking about needs, not wants. I think that's been the focus all along. I just, I really worry we don't go far enough in what we're doing. If we're going to dig into the building, we should be really digging into the building.
So I just want to clarify, if I could, Peter, that 13 million of the 24 and a half million is existing building repairs. So.
That I understand, but it's not in every room or every space.
You could definitely spend more. That was the 38 million that was in the master plan.
I think it's fair to say in life you can always spend more.
Right, but it's what we're spending it on, and I basically would rather spend it on making sure buildings are safe and stand the test of time. This is a building that has certainly stood the test of time, but it's come to a point where we need to make sure that it's still safe going forward. Mr. Kelly?
Peter, what you're bringing up now worries me. I mean, I'm concerned about you saying, just the fact you brought it up now, if something happens and you brought it up and we didn't act on it, that's going to be something that, that's going to be, worry me. I really had no problems with this going into this. But just making that statement, I want to hear from the architect. Russ, can you address more in more detail Peter's comments about that there might be some things that are not addressed that could be, could be concerning?
Well, you know, we did a careful dive, as Karen mentioned, on the infrastructure that was identified. So there are a lot of systems and a lot of casework, but it's not a complete renovation of the older sections of the building. I believe it's inadequate in the right scope of work, and you've got a contingency built in and some cost escalation built in. So I think it's a very reasonable way to go forward at this point.
So in your opinion, there's really no red flags in this project that we should actually make note of. Because as I said, we brought it up in this meeting, and if something happens and we didn't do anything about it, then then it's certainly not really responsible on our end. So if you think.
I don't think there are, Joe. I think that, you know, we revisited with a mechanical engineering team. We reviewed it in detail with Dan Watson, who knows the building pretty well. We added back some roof replacement work that had been earlier prioritized out. So you've got more than half of this project is about fixing the existing building. And then another 2.9 is renovation. Another $1,007,000 is fixing the site and drainage problems. So the new construction is the smallest, you know, is 6.9 million. So the bulk of this is being spent on your existing site and facilities.
That makes me feel a little more comfortable, and you brought Dan into the formula. I know that Dan is extra cautious on these things. Is he still online by chance?
Okay, just to ease your concerns a little bit, Joe, when the incident happened in North Myannis, Old Greenwich was one of the schools they went in and actually checked all the ceilings. There was one small area they identified, which I think that we're going to hear about at some point in the future. They said it didn't need to be done immediately, so that was the good news. They looked at Old Greenwich, they looked at JC, and they looked at Riverside.
Okay, well, Karen, Tony, and Russ, if you guys are telling me Dan Watson is saying this is okay, I've worked with Dan quite closely, and I'm okay with his judgment. Is that what you guys understand?
Yeah, he was part of the process.
He was on every meeting.
And we were actually in a capital planning meeting today for the budget, so yes.
Good enough for me. Thank you.
Ms. Hirsch.
So just to reiterate on that, you did mention that there's contingency funds. So should we be in the process of working on the older parts of the building and discover that there is something that was accidentally not seen and needs to be fixed? We do have some, I can't even speak, contingency funds built in to address that. That's correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, then, if there's no further discussion, take a vote. The motion on the table was to prove the old Greenwich old Greenwich School Education specifications as presented. All those in favor? That is unanimous, eight zero. Thank you very much, the old Greenwich community. You're on your way.
Happy birthday, Jen.
Well, we missed it. You know what? No, she told us her wish, so we had to wait till after midnight. You're not supposed to tell your wish, folks. All right, next up is the tuition and fees. This is, I don't know, our third read of tuition and fees. So I'll just go ahead and make the motion to approve the fiscal year '23 tuition and fees as presented. Is there a second? I want Dr. Francis's second. She hit her hand up. She's your hand. We use hands in this classroom. All right, Mr. O'Keefe, if you could just quickly walk us through the changes.
Sure. So we were asked the last time to take a look at the last chart, which is the secondary summer programs. As we looked at it, you know, rather than sync up a list with what Ann was. As we looked at it, you know, rather than sync up a list with what Ann was showing in the prior meeting. For courses that may or may not be offered, we, we figured that it's probably best to reformat it. And we did that and established four levels of programs with examples of each, along with the proposed rates. And level one would be a college prep course with lab, for example, chemistry. Level two would be a full year credit bearing course. Level three would be a credit recovery review course, improved grade or a bridge course. And level four would be semester courses. And so we've listed the, the proposed prices for those courses, which are up three percent year to year.
Questions, Ms. Downey?
I'm just a quick one, Sean. On these level one, level two courses, I mean, the, the hour is late and I don't have the old chart in front of me. Is this about what they were before? Cause they seem like expensive classes, or if that's just what it costs us to run the class? I don't know. I'm just kind of, how was the number? Cause they are expensive.
These are identical to the, to the tuitions we were looking at.
And that we've previously. And what we've previously charged for these classes?
For those classes, correct, Sean?
For, for level one. For level one, we're going from nine seventy-five to a thousand five. Level two goes from nine oh nine to nine thirty-six, three percent increase.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Hirsch?
I know I'd sent this question in, but I hadn't gotten the answer, so I wasn't sure. On that same page, page five, under the proposed fees for the twenty-two, twenty-three for level four classes. I saw that the chart listed the class fee is forty-eight dollars. Last year it was two hundred and fifty. Where was it? Last year was two ninety-eight, so we're two hundred and fifty dollars less. Was that just a typo?
That was a typo and it's fixed on the chart now.
Thank you. Well, I didn't see it fixed on the document that's posted. So what is the correct?
It's, it's three oh seven, three percent increase.
Thank you.
Okay, so Sean. Keep doing that. Can you just make sure the version, the updated version gets posted on board docs? So what we're voting on that bottom line, can you read the numbers across for level four?
Level four is, uh, three oh seven and free and reduced forty-nine. So two ninety-eight to three oh seven for the class fee for free or reduced forty-eight to forty-nine.
Okay. All right. So maybe you want to make a motion to amend so that we can.
The other last question is you also removed the rates for the summer school program and the GPS employment play rates. Are you still working on those?
Those were deleted because the, for the GPS employees, we apply a fifteen percent, which is discussed on the first page in that package. It was also another item, I think it was a six-hour elementary course that you had asked about. And we have not conducted those classes in several years. So Ann suggested that we delete them.
Okay, because they were in the last report. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that.
The new version is updated.
I don't know. I'm looking at the one that's posted on board docs, so I don't see it.
No, it's, it's been updated. I guess it hasn't been, uh, sent to board docs. It will.
Okay, so do you still, do I still?
We're going to take a motion to amend it just so that we.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to amend level, the fee for level four for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three, that the class fee instead of forty-eight be three oh seven.
Second for that motion, Dr. Francis, thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion to amend? Joe?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven zero. All right. So the amended motion on the table is to accept the tuition and fees as presented with the amendment. All those in favor? All right, that passes seven zero. Thank you very much, Sean. Sorry for running you through the wringer on this, but we want to make sure we get that right.
No, that's quite all right. That's quite all right. I apologize for the, for the typos.
No worries. All right. So last up is the financial and staffing report. So I'm going to move that we accept the financial and staffing report for the period ended September thirty, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second? Dr. Francis is so fast with her hand tonight. All right, Sean, quick, quick, quick summary.
Yeah, not a lot to talk about this early in the year, but as of September, we're, our operating expenses is twenty-one point five million, which is twelve and a half percent of our budget of a hundred and seventy-one point nine. Spending is up about eleven percent and driven by two things. One is that supplies are up about a million dollars. And it's really a phenomenon of the fact that, you know, it's, it's a residual impact of the pre-spend activity from June of last year. And, and we were slow in purchases in July, August, September of, of twenty. So that plus we have some COVID related expense that hasn't yet been charged out. And so when you normalize for those things, we're, we're pretty much on track with our year-to-year spending rate per the plan. Capital, continued focus on that. Our capital is twenty-eight point seven million, which includes the, the new addition of our full year twenty-two budget of thirteen point two. And when you look at the pre-full year twenty-two, which is really the area that we're focused on closing out. Our balance is fifteen point five million dollars, which compared to a year ago is down about fifty percent. So our fifteen point five is down fourteen seven or about fifty percent. So we're continuing to focus on closing out those older projects. And then school lunch finally is really not much to talk about other than, you know, we did budget for a relatively normal year, but as we are seeing now, the, you know, we will probably continue to have reduced cash sales revenue. And with offsetting increases in state reimbursements, given that the free food program is continuing till June of twenty-two.
Thank you. Are any questions or discussion?
I'm sorry, as I was leaving through, Sean, I had had some questions about the staffing report. Did we like those adjustments? Cause you were fixing some of the math on the, I tweaking it.
I did, I did send you the answers and there are a couple of areas where the formula is not correct. So we've got to fix that. So I will get those two charts updated and we'll get those updated to board docs.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, I don't know if Christina with the question that you had asked was the same one that I was going to ask. I just, just wondering, it notes, the report notes that we're down six custodians. And I didn't know where those vacancies were for looking to fill them.
I don't know the location, but we are down six. Three of them have been hired. One has a start date of October twenty-fifth. The other two is awaiting clearance. And, and we're continuing to look to replace the other three.
Thank you.
And as far as how the work is getting done. That is basically, you know, the staff's chipping in with overtime plus occasionally we have a temp that comes in to help get the work done.
Thank you.
And there's just one last comment on that is we, about a year ago, we tried to, uh, restore to F T E's, custodial F T E's. Restore headcount that had been reduced several years ago. But unfortunately, we were unable to get approval for those. And we, we'd still like to pursue hiring, restoring to F T E's and custodial ranks.
And I presume that'll be part of our discussion at our budget meeting.
Yes.
Makes sense. All right. Seeing no other hands. The motion on the table is to accept the financial and staffing report for the period ended in September thirtieth as presented. All those in favor? Seven zero unanimous. Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. All right, just very quickly, before we get back to our community comments, agenda planning, two things I noted tonight. Looking for some further enrollment information on where the students are going, although I think some of it is a replacement value, but put that on the T V D and then possibly an update on achievement gap, closing plan, which I think there was some discussion about when that might be. So we'll have to figure that out in our next chair meeting, which will be my last chair meeting. How about that?
Help in the seminar and those sort of concepts coming back as well.
Yes. So A O P, I think was going to come back. I think Mr. D'Amico was talking about having that come back in December. Yeah. But I, I think there may already be a report scheduled for December. He was putting that in what's what the people look. All right. So now we're going to resume our community comments. Ms. Hirsch?
I was just going to ask, we had about having a special education update because we were supposed to be seeing where those plans were that were from the audit recommendations. And I don't see that on here.
I think that actually was, we were looking at holding that for September. So we've got a separate document of things that are coming up at our next chair meeting and that's on there. So we'll figure it out.
September?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. November or December. So it's.
Thank you.
But yes. Uh, yeah, next year, next September, because you know. All right, we're going to go back to our community comments. I will again remind all of our speakers about our policy. Get three minutes to speak. We'd ask you be civil and respectful. And all of that good stuff. So I'm going to go back to our list if you give me one moment, because I have ten thousand questions to pick here. Our next speaker is Maraisa Mikuljak. And if you're with us online, if you could raise your hand.
Hello?
Okay, we've got you. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Mariam Mikuljak, but tonight I've been asked to read a statement from a group of teachers who don't feel safe to speak here tonight. This statement is a consolidation of many statements written in first person from a group of anonymous teachers. You all may not know how many of us are being discriminated against and how hundreds of us in the Greenwich Public Schools are being discriminated against. I've been a teacher for almost twenty years. I've been praised for my work. I've never had a warning of any kind. I've mentioned, I've mentored new teachers. I've been dedicated. I've never stopped caring about my job. Yet now we are all being discriminated against because of a personal decision not to be vaccinated. The new mandate not only discriminates against those that have chosen not to be vaccinated, whether for personal, religious or medical reasons. But it has left us feeling threatened, isolated and scared. We endure constant stress, lack of sleep and fear of retaliation. I am not a public health threat. I taught through the entire pandemic last year in person. Never once was I thought of as a danger. I was an asset, a hero, someone to be applauded for doing my job. Now I've become someone that can't be around anyone unless I test every week. I had COVID a few months ago. I have more antibodies than a vaccinated teacher. Yet our government and school district believe that I can pass along COVID and the vaccinated teacher cannot. When we know the vaccination does not stop the spread of the virus. This is clear discrimination and has left us open for unfair judgment and unjust treatment from our colleagues and administration. Teachers eat in the faculty room and attend meetings unmasked all day long. Yet as an unvaccinated staff member, I've been asked to remain masked at all times. This has segregated me from my peers and colleagues, put me in a situation to isolate myself in my classroom for lunch, even though I continue to test negative and have no symptoms. The second day of school this year, I was told by a colleague of whom I have been friends with for almost a decade that she wouldn't work with me because I'm not vaccinated. I felt hurt alone and isolated. We live with constant stress, having to get a test that is known carcinogens placed in our nasal cavity every single week. I, along with at least a hundred other teachers, go above and beyond for our job, for the kids, and it is shameful how we are being treated. I have devoted my entire career to the Greenwich Public Schools. This uncertainty is creating overwhelming anxiety that my job, health insurance for myself and my family.
Thirty seconds.
Are not secure. We are asking for an accommodation. Many of us do not want to put the carcinogen-laced swab into our nasal cavity every week. Some for personal reasons, some religious and others for medical reasons. Several of us have even suffered from health issues from this procedure that is done over and over again unnecessarily. There is an alternative, a government-approved saliva test, but our voices are not loud. Please help us. Help us like you help all discriminated teachers. Support us because we are teachers too, who love our job, care for.
Time.
And do the very best.
Thank you very much. All right, our next speaker is Lillian D'Souza. If you could raise your hand. Lillian, if you unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. My name is Lillian Mousiak and I have a daughter on first grade at North Myanis. First and foremost, I want to express my gratitude to all teachers. You all have my deepest and most sincere respect. We love you and we know you had to sacrifice so much for the children. We are living in a crisis. We stand before you because we want to work collaboratively with the board. I am free to be and free to act. And I'm here because I want to protect freedom of choice and I want to save our children. I'm here because I am concerned about my daughter and about our children. First of all, it's related to parental choice. I want to remind you to respect the decisions and not force him over. We see how the B O E are completing, distorting of the education system. Sexual and gender education does not involve you. We object to the teaching of various cells, critical race theories. Parents should have a voice in the child's school curriculum when it comes to subjects like sex education and critical race theory. Second, stop vaccine mandate. We will refuse any vaccine mandate. Enough with the mandate. We know the pandemic was created in advance. Why should that child be subjected to the risk of an experimental vaccine? I believe injecting a COVID vaccine into my body would mean that I'm perpetuating the immortal use of a fetal cell lines. I believe that time and distance from the evil that originated long ago does not excuse it or making me free of responsibility for participating in it. Injecting products manufactured or tested using fetal cell lines into my body violates my religion beliefs. Third, mask harms children. The mask must stop. We need to allow kids to build of natural immunity. Masks are ineffective and potentially harmful. Masks interfere with task performances, efficiencies and cause low blood oxygen and elevate carbon dioxide level. Our children are in school for seven hours, basically breathing their own exhaust. Four, fighting for freedom. We are not going to be intimidated.
Thirty seconds.
Not give up. We are parents that wants the best of our children. We're not going to sacrifice our children for the government. We're drawing the line here. The problem today is not COVID. Suppression is excuse, is justification. I have to say, this is ridiculous. This needs to stop. You know, God gave us a mind to determine good from evil and a will to choose between good and evil. Please work with us here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The next speaker signed up is Darren Mousiak. I don't know if he's separately giving comments.
I don't see him online, Peter.
All right, then we're going to move on. The next speaker is Julie Freniers.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Julie. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I was going to do a, I'll quickly go through my, my comments for tonight. Good evening, everyone. As you know, my name is Julie Freniers and I am the executive director of the Greenwich Alliance for Education. I plan on speaking monthly about education and our partnership with the Greenwich Schools, teachers, students, Greenwich High School, avid alumni and our community. Tonight, I would like to share that we are celebrating fifteen years as the education nonprofit supporting the Greenwich Public Schools. Here are a few highlights which demonstrate our significant and lasting impact on the Greenwich Public Schools. For fifteen years and with three point eight million in total funding, we have supported the students, family, families, alumni and the education educators of the Greenwich Public Schools. For fourteen years, as part of our reaching out grants, we have provided one point seven million in funding to fifty-two grants across all fifteen buildings of the Greenwich Public Schools. And for thirteen years, we have promoted early childhood education, resulting in over six hundred and eighty-six thousand for our youngest learners and our families. For twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we are investing a hundred, over a hundred and eight thousand in the following reaching out grants. Families as partners at Hamilton Avenue Theater Arts and New Lebanon Ruler and S E L program at, at Eastern Middle School, Unbound Innovations, Virtual Reality, really cool, at Western Middle School, esports at Greenwich High School and Education and Wellness Center at Greenwich. and Education and Wellness Center at Greenwich High School. On the grant side, we continue to support the Developing Artist Grant, which was started in 2016 and has reached 8,000 middle school students. And Innovation Lab, we're still supporting student projects. Now, after listening tonight, I am really excited to be the R and D arm for the Greenwich Public Schools, and I look forward to working with the new program administrators even more after listening to try the many new ideas that they have in their new roles. Thanks for the opportunity to speak about the many ways we are partnering to enhance the educational experience for Greenwich students and teachers. See you at the Turkey Trot and see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate the partnership from the Alliance. All right, the next speaker is Linda Whitridge. Linda, if you're online, if you could raise your hand. Oh, she's in person, hold on.
Thank you. Okay, good evening or good morning, members of the board and Dr. Jones. I know it's late, but I respectfully appreciate that I can have my voice heard. My name is Linda Whitridge, and I'm here today to speak for my husband and myself and my three daughters in the Greenwich Public School system. I'm here today as a mom that wants the freedom to make choices, I believe, to be the best for my children. We've all become obsessively caught up in a political and social divide over COVID that has trickled down to our kids. And if we, as parents, don't speak up now in the name of common sense and compassion for our kids, they'll be continued to be taken advantage of to bolster whatever political scenario they happen to be living within. At some point, we have to be able to move on. We have to allow our kids the freedom to live their lives and not be used as political pawns in this game any longer. The risks of the virus are so low for children, we shouldn't be asking more of them for the greater good. That's no longer fair. For me, this is about choice. You may be tied to the state's ruling now about masks in schools, but there is so much more to it. We need to work together to stop caring so much about optics and start caring about the kids. Why can't the kids play together across classes in recess in elementary schools? Why can't they go on field trips? Why are we preventing kids from playing on their sports teams in high school? Why aren't all students, like the sixth graders, allowed into the auditoriums with the seventh and eighth graders? Most importantly, what's going to happen in February? Are you going to step up and give kids and their parents the choice to mask or not to mask? Next up, vaccinations. We all know the vaccine for our kids is and will become more of an issue as emergency authorizations are extended. And to be frank, there are a lot of us that aren't going to want to give our young kids this vaccine at this time, whether it's because of the possible side effects, the lack of long-term studies, or just the fact that generally kids aren't as affected by COVID and that they shouldn't be pawns any longer. We don't want it. We want the choice to say no and not to have our kids punished for that choice. We see what's happening at the private schools. Are we going to follow suit in the public schools? While Lamont, and you may say there won't be mandates, there are other ways in which the children are being forced to pay the price, and it's not right. Pressuring kids and families to vaccinate their little kids, to be able to play sports, to be able to participate in clubs, to be able to travel. Are you going to segregate kids based on their medical status? Are you going to shame them into following the narrative just to be able to live a normal life as a kid? This is not how personal choice works, and it's not fair to our kids over a vaccine that we know doesn't stop transmission. It doesn't work the way it was advertised by the government, and it has thousands of people reporting adverse side effects and truly isn't necessary for kids. The level of fear imposed on parents and the reduction in acceptable risk has skewed our society into accepting things that we really would never have believed just a few years ago. I will not accept this. I'm ready to hold this line to gain the right to choose if my children should be masked and to fight the forced vaccinations. These are our kids, and it is up to us to decide what is right and best for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate the fact that you stayed all the way to the end. Seriously, it's usually just Lil and Brian. All right, next up is Graham Fatadad, although I don't see him. I do believe he emailed the board his comments, so thank you, Graham, for that. Next would be Christopher McCormick, also not seeing Christopher online. If you are online, please raise your hand. Like, where are you seeing him? I'm not seeing him. Christopher McCormick not seeing you and not...
I'm not seeing any of the last few here.
And the last is Kristin Neminski. Kristin, if you're still with us, raise your hand. All right, well, that, I guess, is going to do it. Thank you, everybody, for participating this evening, for the length of our meeting. Dr. Jones, please thank your staff for staying so late. Mr. Kelly, I believe you have a motion for us.
You could pass it over to Gaetan if you'd like, considering she's used to doing this, and it's her last time.
No, no, I'm getting to do it at the next meeting, because this used to be my job. All right, Dr. Francis. Dr. Francis moves to adjourn. Mr. Kelly, would you like to second that?
I will second it.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.